I'd like to now call this meeting to order. The Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees Meeting of December 2nd, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro?
Here.
Trustee Benton?
Here.
Trustee Berg?
Here.
Trustee Goldstone?
Here.
Trustee Jacoby?
Here.
Trustee Metz Childers is absent. Trustee Oppenheim?
Yep.
We have a quorum.
And just to be clear, trustee Berg is participating remotely tonight.
And we do have a quorum present in the room.
And we do have a quorum, right. If you could all please stand and join me for the plaudits. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes of our previous meeting on November 18th, 2024 is their motion.
Move approval.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Chargers report, Eric. Where do you go? There he is.
This is the October 2024 Treasurers Report. It represents eighty-three percent of the year. Actually, do have quite a few things to highlight tonight, but nothing that can't be explained. And actually, most of it is beneficial to the village. Net sales tax increased from last month in the same period of last year. That's due to some nonrecurring revenue items which appear to be related to the leveling the playing field or the internet sales tax that passed a few years back. So we're collecting some of those internet sales taxes here. Water and sewer billings showing higher usage months that's expected this time of year. We'll see that start to fall off next month, but expected as well as we move out of those higher usage months. Interest income continues to outperform the budget. We do know, though, that the rates were cut in September, and we have another meeting coming up in December, and we'll see what happens there. There may be another cut. But it's been good while it lasted, and we've collected quite a bit of extra revenue there, too. Hotel tax reflects payments from all six hotels. We received Lake County property tax, including some TIF increment. State income tax increased significantly from last month. That's likely tied to the fact that estimated payments are due in September, and when people make their payments in September, it gets remitted to us in October. So we see those bounce up quite a bit whenever the month after anybody has payments that are due. Building permit revenue includes plan review fees related to the Continental project, which showed a nice increase for the month. And we received quarterly payments for our dispatch services from Riverwoods, Bannockburn, and Lincolnshire. We also reimburse ourselves out of Jet Speed funds for two of our dispatchers, so quarterly payments coming in in September, or in October. Notable expenditures in October include construction and engineering costs, the DBR chamber contribution. We had some costs, emergency costs related to the storms. IT had a firewall and data storage project going on. We purchased a police vehicle and some squad equipment to go with that vehicle. Those are the highlights, but I'm happy to answer any questions that may be on the October report.
Thank you, Eric. Does anyone have any questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Goals and payroll, their motion.
Move approval.
Second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public comment. Now is the time where we offer an opportunity for the public to say their piece on an item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to offer public comment on a matter not on the agenda? There's no public comment. That will take us right into reports. Item 24-121, consideration in action on the report and recommendation of the Family Days Commission regarding the 2025 budget. Justin's going to introduce this and then turn it over to co-chairs Judy Guter and Angie Pitera.
Thank you, Mayor. At its November 4th, 2024, Family Days Commission meeting, the commission reviewed revenues and expenses and unanimously proposed a budget for Family Days 2025. Looking at the expenses for this year, for 2024, the total cost, I should say, the expenses were ninety-eight thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, less revenues of thirty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. So the total cost for 2024 to the village was sixty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. The proposed costs for 2025 are higher. It's a proposed cost of a hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, with projected revenues of thirty-five thousand and fifty dollars, for an estimated net cost of eighty-one thousand seven hundred. Again, every year we've brought this up, the expenses just continue to rise. Some things to note specifically are the rides and games. It's going from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. That's not an increase in anything, that's just the cost increase. We're not adding anything. I think when I first started doing this eight years ago, I think we spent seventeen thousand on rides, and that's with no increases. That's just how much it cost. So costs do continue to rise. It's a small increase of fifteen hundred dollars for fireworks. That's basically just keeping up with inflation. One thing that would be new is we received a lot of positive feedback last year of having a live band on July 3rd. It's the first time that's happened in decades compared to just having more of a kids-focused DJ. Because of the, because of all the positive feedback, we were looking at having two bands and expending the time by thirty minutes. So that would be, bands on July 3rd are relatively expensive. Instead, it'd be going from seventy-six hundred dollars to fifteen thousand. That includes a much bigger stage. We tried to use a more budget-friendly stage last year. The speakers weren't as well, weren't as good. You know, we're using the stage that we use for Harvest Fest, which we know from years of experience is a lot more effective. With that, everything else is just slowly trickling up in costs, which is leading to this. We are looking at kicking off sponsorships earlier this year. We've already started. We have a contractor who's assisting us this year. So we are hoping to increase costs, or increase revenues. But again, it's just unfortunately, every year we're receiving, you know, double-digit price increases for a lot of these vendor contracts. With that, are there any questions? Otherwise, I can open it up to Judy and Angie.
I got a couple, or one. We talked about this on the phone, and we talked about the influence of Highland Park's parade or Family Days, whatever, on ours. What is our strategy to try to resolve that?
So we are working, again, earlier this year, too, to try to increase parade participation, reaching out to local businesses. You know, one thing that we've been facing is, you know, compounding with COVID, too. A lot of businesses simply lost that tradition, that they've been doing it for years and years, and then there were three or four years that they stopped doing that. So reaching out to those vendors earlier, again, we're multiple years past COVID and everything else that happened in the past. So we are already receiving more interest, but it's reaching out to people earlier and more often to try to basically recreate that tradition.
So that's one thing, the shooting, right. But the timing, are we trying to figure out how to adjust to their timing and their timing, how to adjust to ours? Do we know what their plan is?
So we are working to confirm the time to see if anything does change. At this point, our intention is to keep everything the same. A lot of our vendors, for the parade especially, do multiple events, whether that be Northbrook or Lake Bluff. So we are pretty, we can't be very flexible with the parade time. We did consider that in the past, but we would lose too many vendors if we were to do that. So the intention is to keep the parade at noon at this point, just because we don't want to lose any additional vendors.
Yeah, but does that coordinate with what I have heard other communities are changing their times? So how does that work? I mean, there used to be a loop that politicians and bands and everybody used to be able to do, you know, Northbrook, Highland Park, Deerfield, and that's not going to be possible anymore, correct?
Unfortunately, that won't be possible. Again, depending upon what other communities are doing, I believe Northbrook is still doing it later.
As far as Northbrook is still at two.
Okay.
Lake Bluff is before us, and the bands, the bands in question mostly come from Lake Bluff.
Uh-huh.
They're our best bands.
Right.
And so if we were to try and step off even an hour earlier?
We'd lose them.
We'd lose them all. Lake Bluff, we know, is a much bigger production, and they would choose Lake Bluff over us, I'm sure, because then they would still be able to get to Northbrook.
Right.
So they talked about it and just decided we have to keep it at noon.
And Highland Park is what, they moved theirs to a rabbit.
And I think they're still in flux, quite frankly. I think they're still reacting and adjusting, and it'll be interesting to see where they land, but I think we're still, you gotta give them two, three, four years here that that's gonna be in flux. But I think, based on my thoughts, and I think the recommend, I think we stay consistent. If we're consistent, let people...
It seems like, especially with what Judy just said about the bands.
It's an important thing, you know, you got the, you got the Lake Bluff parade, never been there, okay, for fifteen years I was there. There's a nice separation between that time and our time, you know, the guys can do the thing and then get to our, get to our place.
And the other thing was Highland Park used to do a parade all the way down to Deer Spring, and after their event, they've now been doing it just to Sunset Woods, which is nowhere near, nor close to us. So I don't know that it was still a parade, it was a walk for a while.
Well, they don't know what they're doing.
And I think they're still in flux, and we need to honor that. I mean, with good reason, right? Let them adjust to what they gotta do. But I think if we stay consistent, that's the best game, I think, that's the best game plan.
But there's also a positive aspect to keeping it what our residents expect. I mean, there is a tradition. People in this community know when we have the parade, so, and there's a comfort to that. People like it. So...
So you guys, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you guys in just one second. But let's think about what has happened the last several years. We've had Waukegan Road for two summers, right? We've had a shooting. We've had COVID for a couple summers, and those are difficult obstacles to get through. And we've been able to manage or not have it because of COVID, but keep pushing forward. And so for that, you guys deserve a lot of credit.
Yep.
Thank you for everything you do. So Angie, did you want to talk a little bit about 2025?
I just wanted to say, on behalf of Judy and I, we thank you all for your support. We couldn't do it without anybody, without everybody's support, and we're looking forward to a fabulous 2025.
So are we.
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, one quick question. Has there been any thought, or have you already reached out to the high school? Because in the olden days, we have the pom-pom girls and the cheerleaders.
Lots of parade.
And the little bands from Deerfield.
We reach out every single year.
Okay, I figured.
But a lot are camp.
Yeah, most, the marching band is, has been a no for...
Years.
Decades, simply because of the fact that they lose half of the band to either camp counselors or vacations.
They're elsewhere, the kids are elsewhere.
As far as the cheerleaders, the palms, the dance squad, those, the coaches are all emailed, along with all the coaches of all the sports teams as well. And we usually get three to four of the sports teams, but we've not been able to get the palms or the cheer or the dance squad.
Keep trying.
I think it's just, you just keep asking, right?
Well, we get coho, and we get the baseball kids. I mean, there is some involvement that way.
We get soccer, we get baseball.
Right, right. And I look back at the, do you remember when we used to have the float from Hazel Gitlitz from the exercise?
Oh, yes.
Studio, that's where the parts, the multiplex now?
Multiplex, yeah.
And they used to have a very sparkly truck with a lot of glitter and ladies doing, you know, exercise. It was a different world then. There were different businesses, and I can't imagine some of the businesses that we have, it's just not logical for them to have a float, many of the businesses we have. So, you know, I appreciate you guys trying your best to...
Well, I will say that we have a great new parade chair, and she has already gotten a brand-new band.
Good.
That she's very excited about, and she, if she can rope them in, she's the one to do it.
Awesome. I've heard nothing but positive about the two bands on July 3rd. Nothing but positive. People loved it.
People loved it. And they loved that it helped die down the traffic, so people stayed longer.
Yes.
And it spread it out a lot. It was, all of my friends were like thrilled.
Great, great addition.
When you reach out to them, just tell them that they have two new backup singers?
Yeah, no, 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 we're tone deaf in the Goldstone family.
And get the pie somewhere else next year.
Yes. A special shout-out to you and Rebecca for joining that.
Live and learn.
Well, you know, we build on our successes and we learn from our failures or things that don't work. So we're gonna have a great Family Days in 2025.
We will.
Thank you guys for doing this.
Thank you.
You need a motion to accept the report.
Is there a motion to accept the report and recommendation of the Family Days Commission? So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yep.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next two items kind of go together.
We have the ordinance levying the taxes, and then we come back and abate the taxes for the qualified energy conservation bonds. Those are the bonds where we get seventy percent of the interest back from the federal government. We abate those because we have an alternate revenue source to make those payments. Both of these items were discussed in detail at committee of the whole meetings. We held a public hearing at the last board meeting. There've been no changes, and I've received no comments since that public hearing.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric on the first ordinance? Do I have a motion?
Move approval of the ordinance. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else you want to say about the ordinance abating a portion of the 2024 tax levy for the series, twenty, sorry, 2011B GO bonds? Nothing further. You already said it, okay. Questions for Eric? Larry, anything?
No.
Do I have a motion? So move?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 24-122, under new business and ordinance amending section 6-1 and 6-19.4 of the municipal code regarding fines for failing to obtain a building permit in enforcement of building regulations against owners and contractors. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, there's two major updates that are gonna take place as part of this ordinance. One is clarification of liability in section 6-19.4. And again, this just clearly states that the homeowners and the contractor are both liable in the issue that a stop work order has been levied against the property. This basically continues or codifies existing village practice already that the contractor can also be held liable for doing work without a permit. It's just helpful then, as part of the adjudication process, to be able to clearly point to this section to say, this is why a contractor or homeowner is being brought in front of the hearing itself.
So this provides greater clarity that both are responsible?
Exactly.
Jointly and separately?
Exactly. That's a good different case. The second section of this is just creating a uniform fine structure. Just within chapter six, again, we have fifty to a thousand, a hundred to a thousand, three hundred to a thousand. We have two hundred to two thousand. We also have twenty-five to five hundred as part of 125. So we can have issues where it's a commercial property, and they have an IRC, an IBC, an IPMC, a municipal code violation, all of which are generally similar, but all three or four of those have a completely different fine structure. Honestly, there's no particular reason why that is the case. I think things over time had just been adopted differently with different fine structures. So just having one, similar one, two hundred to two thousand, that's it, no matter what, depending upon what the offense is, it does not change. It makes it much more easier to explain to offenders and also easier for staff to be able to levy those fines, since, again, it is uniform. You're not explaining each individual one, why one's fifty, one's a hundred, one's two hundred, and so on and so forth. This doesn't change the way that employees are issuing these fines, it just makes it a much clearer process.
And this ultimately would go to our adjudication system?
If, you know, they want to contest it?
Yeah.
Then yes, absolutely.
Or, again, if they go through that process, and the violator wants to take it to the circuit court, they can take it to the circuit court.
Right.
But it avails us of that adjudication system, yes.
Does anyone have any questions for Justin?
I have a question, and I'm sure that it's just because I don't know the answer. But is it, do you have a chart, like, of what, how the breakdown between two hundred and two thousand? Like, how do you decide which fine you are imposing?
Sure, so, I'd almost say in all circumstances, the staff usually start at the low end of the scale, and then it escalates from there, depending upon, again, you get thirty days at, you know, two hundred dollars, and if you don't comply, then it goes to three hundred, unless it's a second or third or fourth offense, then it just goes up from there. But it starts at the bottom and then slowly escalates its way up.
Okay, so it's not based on what work was or wasn't done? It's based on how long they are taking to comply?
Exactly.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Justin? Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance as reflected here?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And, Your Honor, I want to thank the village attorney's office, community development team, everybody on the community development team. We're kind of coming to this, to us, with this recommendation and trying to figure out how we stop this, because that's what happens, and it's nice to, nice to get to this point. So obviously, if we think it's not working, we'll come back to you.
No, great, great job. Provide some clarity and uniformity.
So Ben, thank you.
Thank you. Item 24-123, resolution to purchase community development vehicle.
Thank you. So the building department currently has one 2016 Ford Escape. It is an inspector vehicle. It's been in multiple accidents that were not the inspector's fault. It's, again, these are cars that are doing very short mileage trips. You know, they're well-maintained by mechanics, but still, just due to the nature of how they're used, they do break down relatively quickly. We have a seven-year life cycle typically for inspector vehicles. In this case, it's going on eight years. Due to the issues that we're having and expected cost increases, we are recommending that we replace the vehicle at this point. As part of the Villages Green Initiative, we're looking at replacing it with a Ford Escape plug-in hybrid, the EV. So we already have one of those, it's worked very well. The first thirty-five to forty miles are electric, which is typically what they're doing in a day, so for all intents and purposes, it basically is an electric vehicle. Otherwise, it gets a hundred and one miles to the gallon. We have the infrastructure in place to support this vehicle currently, and we have the money in the green energy fund. Again, unfortunately, as we've worked with Metro's legal department, we weren't able to complete the Metro right-of-way planting that had been approved by the board earlier this year. Therefore, we're using the money that was supposed to go towards that project, the purchases vehicle, and then that project will be completed next year.
Can you run that by me again, the Metro?
Sorry. The Metro right-of-way planting project, we're gonna do native planting up and down, I think, from, yeah, I think it was from Hazel to the northern limits.
Oh, but we're not doing that because of the Hazel reconstruction.
Exactly, yeah. Well, that's just, we're gonna do that, yeah, up and down.
Dragging their feet on the legal.
Yeah, so it's still in their legal department, so we, you know, we missed the window for this year. So the intention is that we should have it completed by next year, but we weren't able to use those funds as previously approved by the board for this year.
So how much are we using of those funds?
I think there's fifty-two thousand dollars and change still as part of that contract that hasn't been spent, so we would be using forty thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars of that for this year. So there's still ten thousand-ish, twelve thousand-ish remaining.
Is this vehicle available?
It is, it's on the lot, we will have it tomorrow, assuming approval, pending approval.
How many miles does the 2016 have, do you know?
I think it's fifty-ish thousand miles. Again, the...
Fifty thousand hard miles, probably.
And that's the, again, it's the, it's a short trips.
Yeah, it's a hard mile.
And like I said, due to multiple, it's been rear-ended multiple times. I think it was rear-ended the very, the third day, I think, we had, it might have been the second day.
Nice.
It's just, you know, fender benders and things like that, you know, and again, just some basic breakdowns. Yes.
Yeah.
Is it saleable? We'll try to sell it?
It is. They offered us four thousand dollars trade-in, I thought, with the way market is, we weren't auctioned off. I think we'll get a better value through the auction, so we'll send it to the auction this week.
And we can apply that towards the ten delta?
Exactly. Yeah, so in theory, this, you know, vehicle would be thirty-six thousand-ish if you apply trade-in and/or auction price.
And we're still working with Metro on the right-of-way project?
Yes, absolutely. Our intention is fully to complete that next year.
I shouldn't have said dragging fee, it's just, it's a big organization, and this is just not a priority.
Very slow, right.
Yeah.
Well, and it's time-sensitive, too. You can only do it at certain times of the year.
Exactly, yeah, either the spring or the fall for somebody's plantings.
Right.
Yeah.
Questions for Justin? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 24-124, resolution to concur with the I-DOT award of the Hazel Avenue Contract, sixty-one K-74.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna take a little bit of time to explain what's been going on with Hazel Avenue. Pretty big project, so, and big dollar amounts, I kind of want to make sure everybody's aware of, you know, the process that we've gone through and where we've been over time. So just quick history on Hazel Avenue, it was constructed starting around nineteen thirty-ish in the nineteen thirties, and started on the, on the east end of Hazel, closer to Waukegan Road. And if you look at aerials, and if you drive, drive the road, you'll see a lot of the older homes are kind of on the east end of Hazel Avenue, and then as you go further west, that was developed later on, so nineteen thirties through, say, the nineteen eighties. And some of those areas were first planted in, around nineteen hundred, but nothing was built at that time. So some of that infrastructure is pretty old, and as it was built out from the nineteen, between the nineteen thirties and nineteen eighties, it was built, it was built according to different standards that were in place at the time. the nineteen, between the nineteen thirty to nineteen eighties, it was built in, it was built according to different standards that were in place at the time. And so, you know, you'll, if you drive from west to east, you'll see different cross-sections of road. You'll see that, that, you know, it's wider in certain areas, narrows down, widens out. We've got kind of a mixed bag of sidewalk. You have some carriage walk that's two and a half feet wide. You've got some four-foot wide sidewalk that has a parkway and everything in between. The trees, of course, along with those eras of construction, were overplanted and planted in a monoculture. Mary, you're shaking your head, so you know that well. And, and so a lot of the trees are, some of them are pretty hardy and are large. They're, they're overplanted, planted too close, planted too close to the roadway.
And the wires.
And, and the way of the sidewalk, and the way of the wires, things like that. So we also have, at, at some point in time, the, the storm sewer and sanitary sewer were combined. So that was on a combined sewer. Later on, that was separated. We had, so we do have a formal sanitary sewer out there, and that has been lined. So that's, that's actually the one thing that's in good shape. Two water mains from stem to stern, so from Wilmot Road all the way to Waukegan. Generally speaking, there are two water mains that run both the north and south side of the street. And we don't have a lot of history on why that was done that way, but it, it was part of the different phases of development that came through in that, in that part of the village. As I mentioned, a lot of it was built according to the standards that were in place at the time. So the roads were a little bit thinner, not constructed. How we would do that today, the treatment that we would have today is a little bit thicker, more robust pavement section allows us to come through and grind off the surface course and then resurface it, and then come back again another twelve or fifteen years later and grind a little bit deeper. So when we build roads now, we're able to, to, to get multiple resurfacing out of, out of a road section instead of just one or zero, which is the case on, on Hazel Avenue. Hazel Avenue between Wilmot Road and Waukegan Road is designated, or originally was designated, an FAU route. It stands for Federal Aid Urban. And now it's called a key or strategic route, same idea, but just a different name. And that allows, that basically means that it has logical termini that are strategical region, strategic regional arterials typically. So Wilmot Road, which is an SRA, and, and Waukegan Road, another SRA, and then this road that collects a lot of traffic and brings traffic to and from those major arterials. So that allows Hazel Avenue the opportunity for federal funding. So it, it's FAU, it's, it's, the mechanism we can use to pay for reconstruction of, of Hazel Avenue is in place, and was in place many, many moons ago, decades ago. We have other FAU routes, and we've pulled this lever on federal funding many times. Greenwood Avenue, North Avenue, Finkston Road Bridge, all the bridges that we have in the village, those are all federally funded projects that we've gone through since roughly two thousand eight, two thousand seven or so. In two thousand eight...
That was a dog.
Eric, you all right?
Not me.
In two thousand eight, cancel, remember this, we had, we had a very, at around that time, we had a very robust capital improvement program. And, and so we were building a lot of projects at the time. Bridges, pump stations, Carlisle Carriageway was under construction. Lake Cook Road was, was under construction. So there's just a lot going on in the village. And, and we had, we planned to reconstruct Hazel Avenue very similarly to what we're planning to do now. Water main replacement, storm sewer replacement, roadway full recon, sidewalks, the full, the full shebang back in two thousand eight. And the dollar amount, the estimated dollar amount was four point two million. How times have changed. And so, and so at the time, surprisingly, that, you know, we didn't have the money to do that because there were just capital projects going on everywhere. We were spread pretty thin. So we sat in that room there and talked about the capital program. We came up with a ballpark figure of a million dollars, and we resurfaced it in two thousand eleven. And so in two thousand eleven, we got a bid price of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we resurfaced it. The project manager and I stood out there and watched the grinding machine come through and grind off the surface, and we realized that we couldn't do this again. And so we knew, just based on what we saw out there, what we observed during construction, that there's no way we're resurfacing Hazel Avenue again. It's definitely going to need a full reconstruct. So, but luckily, we, we were able to resurface it. We capped it off nice, and it lasted us quite a while. We got, we got a, a good amount of time out of it. But in the interim, in, in two thousand twenty, we started a design project. Many of you were on the board at the time. And, and we had support to, to begin an environmental study. We went through an environmental study and then a phase-two engineering design for the project. And we brought the project back to shovel readiness by two thousand twenty-three. So within, say, three, three and a half years, we got ready to, you know, we got through federal process, we got through phase-one environmental studies, et cetera. We got through the whole shebang, and we're ready to construct it. In the interim, we interviewed design engineers. We hired a phase-one engineer. We interviewed again for a consulting engineer to oversee the construction project. And we awarded, we brought the phase-three engineering contract to the village board earlier this year. And that, that was attached to a federal agreement. And so the federal agreement allows a portion of that to be paid for, five hundred some odd thousand dollars is federally, is paid by the federal government. The remainder is paid for by us. The total contract's about one point two five million to oversee the project. And, and so the board approved that earlier this year. The project went out to bid in October. We have five bids, and I think you're all aware of that. The bids came in, and what we look for when we see a, a bid, you know, five bids like that, to see if, if the bids are tight, meaning that, you know, there's a grouping of bids that are right around the same number, which we have. In this case, it's, it's a really good, nice grouping. I think the next highest bid is, is forty thousand dollars off. The next one up is maybe another hundred thousand, and then we've got the outliers that are higher. But ALAM Concrete Contractors is the contractor. That was the apparent low bidder and, and was the successful low bidder as part of that. We feel really comfortable and confident in ALAM Concrete Contractors in their ability to do the project. I, I think handing them a project of this size gives me, gives us a lot of comfort because we've done a lot of work with them. We know their, what, what their wheelhouse is, and we know they're quite capable of doing and completing this project in one construction season. So, so that, that part is good. We did ask, we did go through the bid tabs from the IDOT bid letting that they had, the bid opening. And there's one hundred and fifty, one hundred and seventy, say, projects. Of those projects that were open that date, about fifty percent of those were over the engineer's estimate. And so IDOT is asking that all of the representatives from the different agencies come forward and provide a letter of concurrence, which is what they're asking us to do. It's not uncommon. We've done this before in the past on federal projects. We also looked at the bids ourselves. You know, we've been building roads for quite some time, and we're comfortable and familiar with looking at bid prices and looking at unit prices and everything. It, it would appear to us that, that there's nothing glaring as to why the project came in over, over the engineer's estimate. Every unit price, every pay item is substantially more than they were in the past. Water main pipe price is high. Concrete is high. Asphalt is high. What isn't high is some of the prices that we, that, that would be more, I would say, the types of prices that don't fluctuate. So their mobilization cost is a pretty normal cost. Their traffic control cost is a pretty normal cost. So kind of tells us that price of materials is high, labor's up a little bit, four percentish, and that, that the price of material is what the driver is, fuel for the, you know, these are the drivers of, of the cost. The contractor, we, we met with them and had, had a conversation with them about the bid price, just, just to pick the brain about why it was high. They, they confirmed what we noticed in the bid prices, that fuel is high, trucking is, is out of sight, and that, you know, basically across the board, everything, material prices are just up. And so that's their bid price. Unfortunately, the engineer's estimate was eight point five million. We have just completed our budget process, and so here we are. But we do have four point seven million dollars worth of federal money in the project that we were awarded through the SDP program, the Surface Transportation Program, through Lake County. We have one point three million dollars worth of MFT money that we're putting, that we're throwing at the project. And so I think we're well-positioned to do the work. If we don't do the work and we decide to turn it back, we don't accept the federal money. At some point in time, this project has to get done. And at that point, it's unlikely we'll get federal money again, and that we'll be paying full boat for the whole project ourselves, or some version thereof. With that, the scope of work for the project is from Wilmot, between Wilmot Road and Waukegan Road. It's a full water main replacement, so it's about, about a mile of water main. Those two water mains that I mentioned, they go away, and we have one that goes straight through the project. We have a upgraded storm sewer, which is a larger capacity. Of course, you know, when this was originally designed, the storm sewer was sized appropriately at the time, but then has, you know, that has changed. And so we've updated the storm sewer. As I mentioned, the sanitary sewer is, is quite all right. I'm sure there, you know, we may find an issue or two, but for the most part, it's in good shape. It's been lined. Therefore, we aren't doing a lot of sanitary sewer work. But then a full replacement of the roadway and the carriage walks that are two and a half feet wide that I mentioned that were constructed to the nineteen fifties standard or sixties standard, that gets widened out to a six-foot wide sidewalk, which meets the current standard. Unfortunately, a lot of those trees that I mentioned that were overplanted, you know, those get, you know, a lot of those are going to be removed. We do have a, a good amount of trees being planted on the backside of the project. But all in all, the project is just under ten point two million. The construction engineering is about one point two five. It's a pretty big project. But as you know, and, and as I've mentioned earlier, you know, the project was, was four point five million dollars, you know, it was quite a while ago, but it was four point five million dollars at that point in time. And, and so the scope of work hasn't really changed. It's just the price has changed. We're quite capable of completing the project staffing-wise. You know, we, we, it's not spreading us through, thin or, or causing us, you know, to be able, you know, to miss other items that we have on our, on our plates. So, so we're ready and anxious and ready to, to complete this project, and once again, confident in the contractor that, in their abilities to do it. With that, IDOT has requested that we concur with their award of the project. So that typically goes is we, we concur with the award, IDOT awards the project. Technically speaking, the project, the contract is between IDOT and the contractor. We manage it, they pay the contractor, and then they bill us for our cost. It's unlikely that we'll see the full bill in two thousand twenty-five. Most likely, in, in the way these have worked historically, is that we see, you know, a portion of the billing in the first quarter of the year. And so we'll start, we'll start the project hopefully in February, weather permitting. We'll get a bill in March, April. You know, that might be a two million dollar cost for us. Maybe we'll see another bill by the end of the year, and then, then we won't see a bill for years. That's just the way the federal, that it works with IDOT and federal projects. Or they decide to change their formula, and they bill us right away for it. So there's, there's really no, I would say, historically, you know, the former is true, but you just never know. IDOT is kind of a wild card, and it's hard to read them when it comes to this sort of thing. So we appropriate the money, we sit on it, we do the work, and when they bill us, they bill us. We've done this before in the past many, many, many times. And so we're familiar with how they operate. But with that, IDOT has requested that we concur with their award. And they open the floor to questions.
When does the federal money come?
Okay, so the way this works is it's a reimbursement grant, not, not a direct, you know, so, so they don't give us the five million dollars. In fact, the way that this works is that, so the work is completed. The, the contractor comes out, they start doing the work, and every month, they submit an invoice. The invoice goes to IDOT.
Okay.
IDOT pays the bill, and then they will, they bill us for our portion of it. So we never actually, they never give us a five million dollar, you know, pile of money. The money goes to the contractor. So, did that answer your question, Mary?
So the state manages the federal dollars?
Yes.
The state gets the grant, and they, they, they apply those dollars to the project. That doesn't come back through us.
Okay.
We're only responsible for our portion.
Okay.
That's right.
But that, that's, that's why the timing gets weird. We know that the Deerfield Road project wasn't finally billed for at least four years, maybe five.
And, and Wilmot Road, the same. And the bridges, the same. Yes.
We don't wish for that. We want to get it done. We want to, Eric's tired of carrying this thing on the books. On the other hand, it's, it's, it's not essentially a pass-through because that, that money gets diverted before the bill comes to us.
Right. Okay.
So often what we do is, you know, so next year, when we sit down to do our billing, or I'm sorry, our budgeting, you'll, you'll see that in, in the capital, in, in the street improvements or capital improvement section, there'll be a little bit of, there's money that we're, we're holding over. And, and we'll keep leaving a note of that in, in our financial software for as many years as it takes until we actually get that off the books. So we continue to track it.
I, I have a comment and a question. It seems to me, Bob, that in two thousand and eight, you knew this day was coming, right?
We did.
Yeah, right?
We did, yep.
And we did everything we could to not only maybe delay, delay the inevitable, but also secure the funds
Yep.
in order to have this happen. We're very fortunate that we have four and a half million dollars coming from the feds. And I understand there's a shortfall of one point six, but sometimes it happens. We can't walk away from this project because of that. We've come too far for too long a period of time to walk away and say, we'll deal with a twelve or fifteen million dollar project sometime in the future when we can. We're here. We have to deal with it, and we will. So that's how I feel. Now, with Hazel Road going to Waukegan and, well, sorry, up through, up to Waukegan, but also past the pool, are we coordinating, or is there going to be any interference with the pool, the park district, anything like that?
So we don't have a construction schedule yet, but preliminary discussions with the contractor would lead us to believe that they are aware of those challenges, and they are ready to work around those challenges. Not that, not that we won't have a problem with ingress egress at the pool at all, but they know that the pool's an issue. They know the timing of the opening of the pool. They know how important the park is to us and the events that we have at the park. And they are going to make it as palatable as possible, working around those areas. So to answer your question directly, there's, there's no guarantee that we aren't going to have any impact to those locations, but the contractor knows, and they're, they're ready to work with us to make sure that it is his best, it is the best ingress egress as possible.
Okay. And so as we get closer to that time when the construction intersects with pool season,
Mm-hmm.
we need to work with the park district and our, and our residents about how that's going to be managed.
Yes.
And Jewett Park, too. It goes by both.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. We would, we would surmise, and, and the, you know, through our discussions with the contractor as well, that the work begins on the west end of the project
Yep.
towards Wilmot. Underground work is hopefully, you know, barring weather, obviously, right? But underground work starts in February, and that underground work is done in that area, and a good chunk of the roadway work is done in that area as well. So we're, we're planning to minimize the impact there. You know, we know that Memorial Day is the opening of the, of the pool generally, and, you know, we're, we're ready to, to try and knock it out of the park before we get to that point. No guarantees on it, but, but that is the current plan. Same thing goes with impacts to Jewett Park. The contractors were that that's a big issue for us. And, and they're going to work on underground roadway. We're going to have multiple crews out there doing all of the above, and we're going to do everything we can to minimize those impacts. And work with the, the school, the park district.
Schools, parks, everybody.
And, and the residents as well, yes.
It's going to be, it's going to be of us.
Absolutely. Yes.
But as we talked about maybe last meeting, the more that we can communicate, the more that we can get other people aware of what's happening and when in the, in the community, the better. Even though it's going to be a pain, people just need to know.
Yes.
I would assume that's one of the advantages of ALAM pointing the bid as well, because they have done this kind of critical timing construction here for us and done it recently, so that working with them and dealing with them, they're pretty cognizant of what we need, and they've been pretty good about satisfying our needs in the past.
I don't, I don't think there's a better partner for us on a construction project like this.
Given the number of people. Had a good run with them for several years.
Yes.
Given the number of people that I've heard that said, ALAM is terrific.
Yes.
They'll, they'll work with us.
Yes.
They'll do a couple of things around their properties that they don't have to do, but they'll do it anyway. And they got a very high ratio of goodwill.
Well, we're going to have access issues. I mean, you know, we've got family days around Jewett Park and the pool. I mean, there's a lot of critical points when there's a tremendous number of people trying to congregate in the very places where we're constructing.
Well, the, the one thing that two years of Waukegan Road has taught us is how to deal with this.
Yep, you bet.
Where's Eric? Eric, we talked a little bit about this earlier today in our phone call, about how we can manage the one point six million dollar shortfall, how it affects our budgets. Do you have any thoughts or ideas?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have two projects potentially already with the solar panels and this one that might cause us to amend the two thousand twenty-five budget, which hasn't even started yet. But we'll come back with options. It may be reserves. It may be that we're expecting some additional building permits from, in two thousand twenty-five from five large projects that may be able to be used for this. As we stand at the end of two thousand twenty-four, looking at the two thousand twenty-six, so two years of capital projects, likely to need bonds. We may be able to roll these projects into, into that. But as we get a little farther in to see that, we'll come back with some options on how to fund these things. But they, they, it will require a budget amendment. It's just how, how we fund it, and we have some options with, with those.
But there are reserves available that are still above your operating policy
Correct.
should we endorse these projects. So we're not operating outside the margins of what you guys have approved in terms of fund balance.
And, and, and that's why we have the reserves to, one of the reasons is for, for things like this. So...
So no big bake sale?
You said, we don't get billed, typically, we don't get billed in one lump sum.
Yeah.
So if it's a million dollars in twenty-five and six hundred thousand dollars in twenty-six, whatever, it takes, there will be some time for us to work with this whole, whatever.
Yes.
Shortfall.
Yes, and, and Eric is really familiar with that.
Okay.
Some time, but I don't think we want to play... Some time, but I don't think we want to play the, the cash flow game. Once, once the bills start coming in, we want to have a plan in place for what we want to do with that. But there is, historically, there has been a lag there, but I don't, I don't think we can count on, on that lag.
Okay.
I'm not sure what other bid kind of situations we've got coming up, but this is, this information from this situation might be something to keep in mind next time we look at engineers' estimates.
Yeah, I mean, every, every year when we do projects, you know, we look at bid tabs. We often, you know, if we have some that are really recent, we'll grab those, and we use that for the engineer's estimate. I think that's what our engineer did when they put their engineer, when they put the estimate together. But obviously, that didn't work. And, you know, it, it's, it's really unusual to see something, you know, this, you know, something coming this high, but it, but we're not the only ones. So, you know, it's, it's, it's showing us that that's a trend.
Yeah. And that's my point, just keep it in mind.
Do we build in extra percentage of miscellaneous in our estimates?
Well, you, I don't want the guys to pad the bids.
No, that's true.
We've never done that, yeah.
I, I think part of what's going on here is the whole federal money is finally flowing to projects, and contractors are bumping numbers. I think, I think there's, from a global sense, you're seeing the federal infrastructure dollars pushing. I put, I, I put, unfortunately, we were the first contract like this with my Lake County Managers Group that just came out. I think they're going to experience the same thing, because I think there's just pressure on contractors right now. And fuel prices haven't, and fuel prices really haven't dropped. So you've got high fuel prices, which is a big part of asphalt, trucking, shipping, all that stuff. So I, I think that world is just a little bit feeling it.
Okay.
On, on the other hand, you know, the project needs to get done.
Absolutely.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be cheaper next year. No, that's what I do know.
How long will it last for 2008, so that's 16 years?
So, so, so the way we reconstruct things now.
Rebuild versus resurface, right?
Yeah, so, so we'll be able to resurface this road. I would imagine you'll get, you know, the, not out of the first, so you'll reconstruct it, and then, say, 15 years later, we'll resurface it, and then 15 years after that, we'll resurface it again. I'd imagine you'll get 40 years out of, out of the road.
Right.
But the water mains typically 50 years.
Water mains about 100 years. It, you know, if we can get, if we can get 75 years out of a water main.
We will look for your report in 40 years.
Okay.
You'll be here to get it, won't you?
Yeah.
Awesome. And again, I think Bob articulated, staff is strongly in support with moving ahead with this project now. Let's get it done. Let's not walk away from 4.7 million.
There's no way.
Dollars. It just, it seems like.
I mean, it just, it happened, it's conclusive events, it happened.
Yep.
We got to deal with it and move forward. So does anyone have any more questions for Bob? Larry, anything?
Nothing else.
All right. Are we ready to seek a motion to accept the resolution to concur with IDOT's award of Hazel Avenue?
I would move to accept the resolution.
Second? Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Item 24125, resolution to approve agreement for Phase Three Engineering Services for the 300 Willmont Road Leclerc Estates Development. Tyler?
Thank you, Mayor. With the approval of the Polte development at the last board meeting, our staff is now ready to execute a Phase Three agreement with a local engineering firm. Along with the overall subdivision approval at the last board meeting, the board also approved a development agreement, which requires that the Polte homes reimburse the village for all construction, engineering-related costs. These costs would include any inspections, documentation, demolition, utility, construction, coordination with area stakeholders, and various oversight responsibilities. Staff has selected Seorba Group to lead this charge. We've, we're currently utilizing their services on the Zion Woods development. We would be, we would be facilitating the project, or the contract, we'd be paying the contract and then seeking reimbursement from the developer. Final cost will solely depend on the construction activities. If the contractor expedites the construction, that means less staff hours or less contract value. However, if they go over, and the project takes a year or two longer than anticipated, that will be an additional cost to what we're executing today. But just as an FYI, that's a, it's a round number. We are sort of guessing based on the schedule that Polte has provided us. However, that can definitely fluctuate over the next three to four years. So again, we're utilizing Seorba Group. They are doing tremendous work for us currently on the Zion Woods project. We've received a proposal in the amount of $284,964, and staff recommends that the village board authorize the resolution to approve an agreement with Seorba Group for Phase Three Engineering Services for the 300 Willmont Road Leclerc Estates Development in the amount not to exceed $284,964. And again, this is.
Does anyone have any questions for Tyler? Is there a motion to accept the resolution to approve the agreement with, for Phase Three Engineering Services for the 300 Willmont Road Leclerc Estates Development? So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of stuff going on, exciting stuff. Items for discussion by mayor and the board of trustees, number of things I'd like to talk about. The Wednesday night, sorry, the Tuesday night before Thanksgiving, I visited with a number of our veterans at the American Legion, right on Waukegan Road, and just talked with them. They offered me some pizza and a beer, and, you know, just pull up a stool and talk, and it was great. Those guys are terrific. Then we had our tree lighting ceremony Wednesday, the following night, and police, public works, staff, Jessica, Justin, you guys just killed it. You did a great job. We're going to stay here for a long time because this is a great location. We really made an event out of it. The kids loved it. The lights are magnificent. Everything turned out to be really, really good. Next year, maybe we'll work on the PA system a little bit. Yes. But everything was terrific. Thank you so much for your hard work. We have our winter celebration, December 6th, here at Village Hall from 5 until 8. I think I'm doing soup or whatever we have.
Several of you guys are doing soup and stuff.
From 7 to 8, and then I know other us, or other, others of us will be there at other times that evening. Winter market, December 7th, at Patty Turner, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also a great event, lots of crafts and fun stuff for the kids. We have our board and commissions reception at 5:70, Lake Creek Road, top floor, the Solarium, from 3 to 6.
Sunday, 8.
On, Sunday, the 8th, thank you. So 6, 7, and 8. So it will be a packed weekend. We also have the Police Department cram the Cruiser Food Drive update. On November 23rd, the Police Department, sorry, we don't have it, we had it. On November 23rd, the Police Department, in conjunction with Deerbrook Jewel, held its annual cram the Cruiser Food Drive, collecting almost 2,000 pounds of food with a value of about $1,000. The proceeds were delivered to the Midwest Veterans Closet to assist veterans battling food insecurity and homelessness. I'd like to thank the community for their generosity, and thank Jewel, General Manager, Tammy Stock, and her staff for the support and contributions to this very worthwhile cause. How many years have we been doing this? Because it's a great cause.
Three, four?
Great job, guys. Great job, and a good cause. Last thing I'd like to just mention is our time of our meetings. We've had 7:30 starts for a number of years. But I'd like for us to think about, or I'd like to propose and see what you guys think about having our meeting start at 7:00. Does anyone have any objections starting? One maybe eh? Are there other eh's? If you can't do it, it's okay.
I mean, depends on the time of year. Right now, 7 o'clock sounds great, but in the spring and summer, it's hard for me to get here.
Okay. Let's keep it at 7:30 for a while and then see.
Let's revisit that maybe in, in a couple of meetings and see if that's, as you think about it.
Yeah. So just think about it.
And Dan suggested this, staff did not suggest this, because we, staff supports it, but we also know that an earlier start means an earlier ending for all of us.
But if it's not good for any one of us, it's not good for all of us, so it's fine.
It needs to work.
Well, could we, could we do a winter start time of 7:00 PM and a spring/summer of 7:30?
We've got a meeting scheduled to publish. I think David, we've got an annual meeting schedule, right?
Can we split it at 7:15?
Why don't we just sit on it for a little while and think about it? And then we can always bring it back up again. I don't want to cause any inconvenience or, you know, people rushing or anything like that. If it's not good for all, it's not good for, not good for one, it's not good for all. That's all I have. Bob, Jennifer, guys, anything you want to add?
How was the turkey wabble?